To make the background itself change.
That is so cool. I'll have to play with that later. Thank you.
That'd be great.
We are getting down to the wire. Reverend Williams is going to be joining us by phone. Dr. Mack and Travis, if you guys wouldn't mind, because I'm not going to be able to see it most likely. If you can keep an eye out for... Let me give you the number real quick.
Is Dr. Bonebrake on? I don't see.
Yeah, I think it's on Rich's iPad. And Dr. Mack, if you guys can keep an eye out for 408-6840 as a phone number. That needs to be admitted and they need to have audio. That'll be Reverend Williams participating via phone.
408?
408-6840.
Okay, and just to let you know also, we started the recording on Zoom. So at this point, we'll be able to edit this beginning part out to get right to the beginning. But we wanted to be sure to remember we had that started.
It is 5:30 and time for the meeting to begin, so I'll turn it on over to you all and to our board president.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Just as a reminder, for people who might be listening, we probably need to identify ourselves prior to speaking, recommendation I read earlier. And we'll start with the roll call. Ms. Lister, will you say the roll, please?
Reverend Williams?
John Williams, present.
Thank you. Martha Nicholson?
Present.
I know Dr. Morrison. Mrs. Bowley?
Present.
Mr. Munoz?
Present.
Mrs. Stuart Campbell?
I'm present.
And Dr. Bonebrake?
Hello.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance and Travis Crue is going to lead us in the pledge. I think we're going to have a flag. There we go, a flag on our computer screens. So if we could stand and Travis, can you use the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
Republic to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you, Travis. At this time, we'd like to have just a brief moment of silence. Dr. Morrison suffered a personal loss this week and in memory of him and his family that are grieving right now. Just a few seconds of silence, please. Thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second. This is Lalo Munoz.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. We have a motion second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? I don't hear any. Ms. Lister, we've got it up on our screens to... If we're logged into Board Docs, we ought to be able to vote on Board Docs. Is everybody able to do that? Or do we need to do it verbally?
I have votes from Mr. Munoz, Dr. Bonebrake, and yourself.
I'm at the vote. Yes, verbally.
Thank you, sir.
Reverend Williams votes yes.
Mrs. Stuart Campbell is in. Mrs. Bowley?
I vote yes.
Okay, I will mark it. Thank you very much. All votes are in. Vote carries unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Lister. Next to school highlights and our senior of the month, we'll go to Dr. Anderson.
All right, and with our senior of the month, let me make sure that I'm not muted here. I'm not. Mr. Gallin has a video and I believe we're going to screen share and show you the video of our senior of the month, who will be visited by Dr. Gray tomorrow with their certificate electronically and with a personal phone call. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gallin. And Mr. Gallin, make sure this is Facebook Live as well as...
My name is Irene Caraccioli and I'm a senior at Topeka High School. I've had a really good experience at Topeka High School in many, many different aspects. I've really enjoyed my participation in debate and in swimming. And then also just through the memories that I've been able to cherish, you know, within the halls of Troy with my friends, going to the games, to the dances, just walking around laughing in the cafeteria. All these, all these aspects have really been wonderful in my high school experience.
The first time I met Irene Caraccioli, she was a student on the forensics and debate squad, which I was an assistant coach for. And I've, she had a reputation coming in as an incredibly hard worker and also being bright. But she also wanted to fully understand what she was learning and how to become better as a student and better and more knowledgeable as a person.
Irene is simply one of those students that you can't miss. She's been involved in student government. She's been involved in organization of locks and making sure that student voices are heard. She is a debater and involved in forensics and debate. She is always busy. She's here all the time.
Debate and forensics has really been my most influential activity through my years in high school. I learned a lot of skills that I wouldn't have learned elsewhere in high school. I learned how to speak and argue persuasively and really analyze topics and identify points that are conflicting with each other or supporting each other and how to manage those. And that's really helped me grow as a learner and a thinker.
As a teacher, you have many students that you really value and respect during your career. But when it comes to Irene, she is a person that you feel like you're fortunate to apply.
I hope to study applied mathematics and economics and also to pursue studies in international relations or political science.
Irene, if I were to give you a piece of advice, it's find balance. Make sure that you find time just for you and you are going to be a success. I have no doubt of that. But don't forget yourself along the way.
One of the downsides of meeting electronically is we don't get to ask them questions about their favorite teacher or where they're going to school.
Well, you know, maybe one of the things that we can do, however, moving forward, is to invite them to do the phone call in or to Zoom in as well. And when we visit tomorrow, we'll see if Irene wants to maybe even join at the next meeting with that, since we don't have an attendance award. So we'll keep you posted in that regard as well.
That'd be great. That concludes our school highlights, I believe. Is that correct?
That is correct. We do have several proclamations that you just approved under consent. So just as a point to note that while those individuals, that is a downside, aren't here to receive the, to read the proclamation, we are posting those proclamations on our social media tonight after the board meeting. Those individuals also will have that sent to their supervisors to be framed. But just to be noted, those various proclamations, today is the official Autism Awareness Day, but it is Autism Awareness Month. Yesterday was Paraprofessional Day. And this month is School Librarian Month. So all three proclamations are also noted and will be posted this evening.
Great. And I assume you'll kind of highlight some paraprofessionals that are helping provide meals to our students later in the agenda, I assume, right?
You know, we're going to invite maybe some of them to join and have conversation with us about how the first few weeks of school have gone. This week was their first week and they've been all over social media today and all week. So we'll definitely invite some voices in the space in the next board meeting. While not a highlight for this board meeting, at the next one, five minutes or so before this meeting started, we did get a call from KSDE that we have challenge awards to announce at the next meeting. While KSDE can't come, we'll see if Representative Ann Ma wants to join it by phone call at the next meeting. But French is the middle school with the challenge awards and there's several elementary. So we just got that phone call. So still highlights to come at the next meeting as well. And we'll try to invite people on the phone to join us.
That sounds great. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Do we need to have a motion to approve business by consent, I think is next on the agenda? Reverend Williams, do you have that motion?
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Reverend Williams, thank you for that motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I second it. Sue Bowley?
Thank you, Mrs. Bowley. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I do see we've, we've had to make some purchases in order to increase our Zoom capacity, which seems perfectly reasonable. See no discussion. We're ready to vote, Ms. Lister?
Vote is open. Mrs. Bowley, do you want to voice vote?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. All votes are in. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lister. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson?
At this time, and I'll be inviting some other voices in the space, this was our first week of virtual school. It started on Monday. I'm going to first turn it over to Mr. Robbins. As we were talking about paraprofessionals who were busy helping give out lunches, he'll share a little bit about how many lunches we've given out this week, how many meals we've given out lunch and breakfast. And then I'll just give you an overview and really leave this for the board to ask any questions you might have about this first few days of school. Mr. Robbins, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about the food service program and the number of lunches slash breakfasts that we've given out so far.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'd like to say good evening to everyone. It has been quite a yeoman's task on the part of both, first, our food service personnel, which has been led by Ms. Nicole Yaki and also Mr. Chris Wagner, along with their team. You mentioned earlier about the paraprofessionals who have joined in since we started bus service this week to deliver meals at street corners. When you look back at when we first started this initiative, we have handed out 27,674 grab and go bags between our stationary sites, of which we started with 13 and we're still servicing those 13, and also our bus routes. And we look at our bus routes in total, we have 31 different routes that are running and servicing students across our district. So those 27,674 grab and go bags, not only are they filled with lunches, but also a breakfast meal for the following morning. So if you double that, we have distributed 55,348 meals to our students since school closure. The buses, we are increasing those numbers each day. Today is our highest number yet as far as bags that we have distributed using our buses along with paraprofessionals to help distribute those. Was 2,692 bags distributed from buses today. In total, we have distributed at the stationary sites up to this point, 18,485 grab and go bags and 9,189 from our bus distribution. So quite a bit of work taking place and I can tell you that all of that credit goes to not only our food service personnel and our paraprofessionals, but in particular Paula Sworzman Waters, who was our transportation manager, who has really been coordinating all of this work, particularly with the buses, to get routes established and routes completed in a timely manner. Even though there are still some hiccups that we're working through, for the most part, I would have to say it's been very successful as far as what the goal was, and that is to continue to feed our students.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Are there any questions about food service or breakfast before we give you just a brief overview of what parents are going to hear on Friday regarding the instructional platform thus far? Any questions for Mr. Robbins?
Mr. Robbins, this is Scott. I have one quick one about how do we ensure the safety of the paraprofessionals who are serving the meals and the drivers of the buses?
Well, we are providing them with the PPE that has been recommended to try to avoid being infected with the virus. We have the gloves, plastic gloves, that we are providing for our personnel to wear along with face masks. So, and we have hand sanitizer available too. So we are trying for those who are willing to take the PPE that is offered. Some prefer not to, but we are making that available in an attempt to make sure that they can perform those tasks in a safe manner.
You know, one of the pieces that I'll add to that from Mr. Robbins as well, we've asked everyone to wear gloves, so we do ask all paraprofessionals to do that as well. So that's a standard practice at all food service sites and lunch serving sites. And the other piece of that is the six-person distancing. We, he has buses coming in a staggered manner. I don't know if you want to address that, Mr. Robbins? And there are only two paraprofessionals per bus, so there are no more than three people on a bus at a time. And so practicing those other CDC recommended guidelines have continued to occur just for social distancing purposes. Additionally, any paraprofessional that's, you know, shared that perhaps they have a health issue or anything like that, we have not utilized those individuals. And we've also asked if any parents want to continue to be on the buses all year. So we've had over a dozen people that just would prefer to do that for the rest of the year. So that minimizes the number of people. And lastly, the school bus drivers are the same drivers for the whole year. So that will minimize the rotation of school bus drivers. Mr. Robbins, a staggered schedule, do you want to briefly address that as the other precautionary measure for social distancing?
Yes, we do have the buses scheduled to arrive at Eisenhower Middle School, which is where our base kitchen is for providing the meals that are delivered and stored on the buses prior to the routes taking place. They come in waves of seven, because we can safely get seven in the roundabout there at Eisenhower to load buses and get them ready to depart. Seven buses at an end, coming at about 10 minutes apart. What we plan to do to further be able to segregate buses and people beginning Monday, we will relocate half of those buses to Topeka High. So we'll be loading half the buses, I shouldn't say half, but probably 20 of the buses at Eisenhower and another 10 of those buses at Topeka High beginning Monday.
And the food service workers, they're socially distancing themselves when they prepare the meals, I assume?
Yes, sir, they are.
That's a lot of meals. You've had, what, eight or 9,000 just in the first three or four days this week, right? Because that's when the bus service started?
Yes.
That's phenomenal.
Over 9,000 just this week with the bus service.
Yeah. What requirements are... I understand some of the requirements have relaxed a little bit, so the student doesn't necessarily, a parent can represent the student? The students in, with their teacher, is that accurate now? Or before, that wasn't the case?
That is the case. It was and has been the practice and one of the regulations with KSDE is that the meal had to be placed with one of the children, age one to 18, that you could not give the meal to an adult. But I think they have taken in consideration the fact that we have online learning that is taking place. In some cases, at the same time, buses are being delivered. And we have some parents that may have ill children in the home. So any of those parents that show up either at a stationary site or at a bus stop are able to retrieve meals on behalf of their children. And the children don't have to necessarily be available for us to see and deliver those meals to. So that is a change that has taken place.
That's a phenomenal job to you and your team, your transportation coordinator and all the paraprofessionals and your food service people. That's just great work for, in my opinion, for the work you guys are doing to provide some good nutrition for our students.
Well, thank you. We have a great group of people and when it comes to serving and doing things that are, that benefit our kids, they are very quick to step up and they've done so in this case also.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Robbins regarding our meal service? I know Ms. Bowley's participated in some of those activities. I've seen pictures of her. Thank you for that, Ms. Bowley.
I would also like to thank the administrators out in the buildings that are still running their sites. They've been out talking with parents and the students are so excited to see them. And they've been out there handing out meals still at those permanent sites that we have. So a big shout out to them and some of their teachers that have come to help out as well.
With the updates about food and on that, on the heels of that, as we're looking at numbers, the 12 sites remained open just for this week. Most of those sites will remain open. Perhaps one or two of those sites that has not had a lot of volume will be closing in the future. And so we will give that notice to families on Friday in terms of if there are any families coming to the site at all for the two sites that we believe could close just based on the small numbers and the fact that they have buses near them now. So we'll be transitioning that. Ms. Wallace is preparing to talk next, so she was going to share a little bit about some deliveries through our buses and through our food service program. We also now have our Topeka toolkits that we told you about. And she'll share with you a little bit about who helped prepare them and what's going out. I also ask Ms. Wallace every Friday to give parents just a write-up of what's going to be coming next for next week. So that write-up is completed and so she'll share with you and give you a little sneak peek of what next week will hold. Ms. Wallace?
Yes. Okay, good evening. So the last two days, we've had nine paraprofessionals from Shaner and Sheldon, so preschool paraprofessionals, and then my office staff at Bishop, creating 3,500 supply, school supply toolkits. Those will be delivered tomorrow with lunches, both at the meal sites and on the bus stops. So they will go out with lunch delivery tomorrow. And then we already have ordered and a plan to send out another 5,000 supply kits here in about three weeks. So we're excited to be able to share supplies with kids who may need them. So there are things like a ruler, a tape measure, there are some spiral notebooks, pencils, you know, pencil sharpener, crayons, just a variety of school supplies that they will need.
And then the students at the rescue mission, thanks to Ms. Wallace making the kids early and Mrs. Sandrager from the principal at Quincy delivering items. As I took those kits over, the Quincy principal had delivered a, the Chromebooks are assisted with that. She even delivered headphones for students, so they would have an opportunity to have silence within the rescue mission space and just have their headphones on and listen to various instructional things. And so those students at the rescue mission also have had a little personalized opportunity and attention instructionally. So far, the feedback that we've gotten on our website through our feedback pool there and through the parent advisory meeting this week has been very positive about the access to materials. You may have seen the articles from Jardine about the hotspot on the bus this week. Many students were able to just walk on, go into Wi-Fi, upload their teacher information and go back home. It only takes about five minutes. Most of what they can do, or much of what they can do, can occur offline through the Chromebook and then just going into a Wi-Fi space, it uploads itself, which only takes a matter of minutes once again. And so that has worked well, although we are continuing to explore other ways to assist our community in ways that we can as a school district with navigating that issue. Those are some of the instructional pieces. I do want to highlight the tech teachers that we are highlighting tomorrow in social media. Throughout the week, we're highlighting teachers who have some pretty amazing lessons. And I will tell you that McCarter is the school of the day and that there's a kindergarten teacher that creatively was teaching phonics in such a way that her students were highly engaged and people were suggesting that other people come and look at their link. So we actually will be featuring her in a video and she's asking parents for permission for their students to be videoed. And so if you want to visit that classroom, you, you'll get a link that you can also visit and see what's going on at McCarter. That teacher is Julie Ferrero in that kindergarten class, but the whole kindergarten team is doing some dynamic work. The other teacher, tech teacher that we're highlighting this week is Topeka High, Kaitlin Maddal. And she is an English language arts teacher. I think they'll be studying Macbeth and doing some other things in ELA and her students were on the edge of their seats yesterday, and so we'll be highlighting her. Lastly, there is a mental health team that has created virtual mental health and a community newsletter and virtual home visits. That also is at McCarter. And so that's also being shared across the... that's also being shared across the district through social media. So some really creative and innovative things. And if you know the teacher doing some stuff that you'd like for us to highlight virtually, please let us know and we will be sure to shine a light on them throughout next week. Any questions about instruction?
This is Lala Munoz. I do have a question. My question has to do with, I know we've done a lot of work to make sure that every student has access to the internet and I, my sense is that many of our students do have that, but for those few individuals who are struggling, would you be able to sort of share just for the audience who's listening right now, everything that's available in terms of what this district is offering as well as other options for students?
Yes, and I may also, if I leave something out, Ms. Wallace or anyone on the team, Mr. Gallen, feel free, or Dr. McDonald, jump on in. And so, you know, the first thing I'd like to say is that really providing internet for individual households, that's not a school district responsibility, but we are doing everything we can to assist families with navigating this community-wide issue. We're encouraging that, you know, as community members have the opportunity to advocate for broadband, that that is done because having broadband access would allow for access for families across Topeka. Absent of broadband, here's some things that we're doing as a district. Thanks to Mr. Gallen and the technology team who's had a number of conversations with the cable network, Cox Cable. Cox is offering 60, has shared that they are offering 60 days of free internet service. At one time, there was discussion about some stipulations which included things like they couldn't have a previous bill or they had to be a US citizen. Those things are no longer stipulations if they were at one time from what's been reported. Again, that's a third party. So that's what they are sharing that's available. So those flyers on our website. 60 days of free internet for families. The other service, the map that we have posted, it's under parent resources on the COVID-19 webpage. That map is something that our staff created, just showing all families where those wifi accesses are. So there are several lots that have wifi access. Thanks to the good work of Mr. Dustin Dick. He did speak with Washburn Tech and Washburn University this week. And they have agreed to allow guest access to their wifi. And so there are some steps to take. That is posted on our website. That's a new addition. The other wifi access portals across Topeka, they're about, you know, certainly 20 or 30 that are on that map that really people, if you just went to that lot or parking lot or a school lot, you'd be able to access wifi. There, those are the main portals. Now, we are also looking at how we might be able to further use antennas to provide greater access as we go into next week. But those are some of the main support systems. The hotspot that I mentioned at Jardine, we placed that at Jardine Scott and Highland Park High on school buses, parked the school buses on the lots. And students, once again, especially secondary, they can work offline, go onto one of those lots and automatically the work will upload and it takes five minutes. And then, and they can go back home and continue to do their assignment in that regard. So those are some of the ways that we've tried to help navigate a community issue creatively. Team, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so, other than we are looking to expand the number of the buses that we will be serving.
Do we know how big of a problem that might be?
And regards, can you clarify the question a bit?
So this is Scott. Just how many of our students do we think don't have wifi? Or haven't been able to, to access their, their assignments with the Chromebook? Because they don't, we assume they don't have internet connection. Do we have any idea or is that easy to ascertain?
Well, Mr. Kip, who's on the line, he's been looking at the number of meetings that people have had, although that's not in the first three days. Since students, you know, high school students just logged on yesterday, they don't come back till Thursday. We really may need a week or two to really see what the level of activity, you know, when you give a survey and you give it online and you're asking about internet access, you know, those that might not have it may not be able to address that online, although most people have a device. Here's what we do know. We know that we've had online enrollment now for two years and as of last year, last year, we had almost 100% of our families enroll online. So even if they don't have wifi access immediately, they have some level of device that has some ability for wifi. Now, any college student, any student that's taking concurrent credit, we gave them a hotspot. We can't buy 14,000 hotspots, nor do I think do parents or anyone think that that's our responsibility to give that. But we've done that for the college classes as we know that the amount of time online is much more extensive. Mr. Kip is on the line and he's tracked the number of meetings and there have been over 2,000, I believe Zoom meetings. But Mr. Kip, do you want to add to that or give any data regarding overall engagement?
Yeah, we are analyzing the Zoom data as it comes in. And, you know, it, Dr. Mickelson brought up the fact of you know, not letting some of these kids fall through the cracks, so to speak. And what we're doing is, in particularly, we can analyze every kid that gets on a Zoom meeting or instructional time, track the duration of that time, the frequency. And so one of the projects that we're doing is some of those high-risk kids, we're actually going in and looking at the log files. Are these kids actually getting in? Were there any barriers? And then having the schools follow up with them or call the families and trying to see if there is a barrier in terms of internet or some other, you know, if it's a technology issue. So kind of trying to build a feedback loop in that respect. There has been very, quite a few kids, you know, we had about 2,000 meetings in the past, a day or so. And several of them are, you know, the kids are getting in multiple times. And, you know, and it's really, really been kind of fun to have, and Dr. McDonald might speak for this, how at a district level, we can hop in and observe teaching as it occurs across the district. It's almost like being in multiple places at multiple times to kind of observe these interactions.
So, Mr. Dr. Mickelson, hopefully that answers some of the questions about not allowing students to truly fall through the cracks or coming in with added supports if there's a need for that, if they do fall through the crack. And then some places like the rescue mission, they have wifi there. So those families can, our homeless families can still be using wifi with their device. And then there are some other spaces as well where there are apartment buildings and community agencies where they also have that access. So we're finding that to be perhaps not as much of a barrier as we thought that might be depending on where they live.
One quick observation, because it seems like we've done most of our advertising of hotspots and things like that online. I assume people have access to a phone or something that where they could see that information, but some may not. And so I wonder if we want to use our bus lunch delivery system to to tape a hotspot map on the buses or something like that where, where parents might be able to see it if they, if they don't have access for some reason to internet.
Absolutely. Dr. Gray, do you want to share a little bit about how we're distributing information beyond method? And then can you also share a little bit about the upcoming orientation for kindergarten?
Yes. In terms of information that's being disseminated to parents that may not have internet access, one of the things that we've done with the information pertaining to Cox Communication, that information has been disseminated to families through the pairs as they give out the lunches in both Spanish and in English to make sure that all families know what resources are out there in terms of internet access. In terms of kindergarten orientation, we're in the process right now. We have planned for kindergarten orientation. The communication team has been supporting principals in making sure that they have the resources that they need. We're currently generating some links that's going to be shared with parents. It's going to be placed out on Facebook as well as the website. So parents will be able to know how to access kindergarten orientation. So that information will be coming out as of tomorrow.
I assume that's all virtual?
Yes, that's all virtual, but we also will have a plan to disseminate that information through the meal program in the form of flyers to make sure that that's in the hands of those who may not have internet access.
Great.
Another piece that we have been using because we do understand that people all may not necessarily have internet access, we've been utilizing our television station as well to get the message out. So that's been another means of communication that we've been using.
And then the last item that I do want to mention is, there's been a lot of talk about graduation and I believe Mr. Dick is on the line. And if he'd like to give, we'll be giving some information soon about dates and things of that nature, but I've given direction regarding what I like to see on graduation based on feedback from parents and students that I've received. And so, Mr. Dick, would you like to give an overall update about that and any other secondary matters, sir? And if Mr. Dick is not on or either if his mute button is off, I'll give you that general update. We will be having two graduations. One is a virtual graduation. It'll happen in May. The same date of the most recently posted graduation in May will be the day that we still keep, but it will be virtual, presuming that we are still under this order. With that, as we move into the summer and go into August and July, we have picked a date in late July to potentially have a graduation at Hummer, if in fact the Shawnee County Health Department allows us. It's an, it will be an outside graduation. And then the rain date would be the August, in the early part of August. I believe August 1st is the rain date. But those dates will be posted in the Friday newsletter that goes home to parents tomorrow. And that's in part as a result of feedback from parents and students as I've had the weekly and sometimes twice a week meetings with the parent advisory and the student advisory groups. So we believe if in fact we can have an in-person graduation, that we will still plan to do that in August, but we will also do the virtual for those kids who might already be gone to college. Or just in case we do, just in case we're still under this order in August, we would have at least had some level of graduation. Topeka High, actually, they are coordinating with Johnston's on getting the robes to those families. So they will have their graduation robes as they normally would. And they'll be delivered for Topeka High. The other high schools have taken care of that. And for those that still have some matters to address in that regard, they will be doing that with families as well. So we'll be continuing that piece. The last piece of promotionals, instructionally, the PTOs and the principals will be discussing the virtual promotional ceremony. So those may be tailored to the individual middle school or high school or elementary if it's fifth grade, but we anticipate that promotional ceremonies will occur. They will be virtually and in some cases, they may well have small groups of families that can take photos together in some type of way. So we'll be looking at that and giving you those details as we get closer to that date. Any instructional questions for us? And team, did I miss anything that you want to share?
I do have two questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Polly.
I would like to know if we are, have some way to track students that aren't logging in or showing up in Zoom for our virtual learning school and if we're tracking them somehow and making a reach out?
Yes, we, I'm sorry, now listen for the second question.
Go ahead and answer the first one. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we are tracking that. Mr. Kip, do you want to share a little bit about the tracking piece? And then those students who aren't logging in, the principals are then with their mental health teams. Those students go on the vulnerable student list and they are reaching out. So, Mr. Kip, do you want to share a little bit?
Sure. And I know like, like at the elementary, they're, they're reaching out to families that are, that are no-shows and not, not logging in. Like I mentioned before with, you know, they can kind of determine as a teacher, you can see who, who of your class is actually getting in or not. And so that's kind of been the focus of, you know, why are these kids not getting in? They are taking detailed notes and sharing these in a collaborative fashion, like, you know, on this particular day, I called mom. You know, they're out of town. And so it's really been kind of a collaborative approach to reaching out to these families. And so, and again, the log files, you know, Zoom has an incredible robust system of tracking every interaction down to what device the kid is using when they log in. So we are cross-referencing those kids, particularly like the seniors, for example, that, you know, that we're looking at their graduation requirements and going through some of that stuff. And those kids that are right on the bubble and the cusp, we want to make sure that they're getting in and participating and getting the, the learning they need to for, for those particular credits.
Did you have a second question? You had a second question, Mrs. Polly?
I do. I know in, I believe it was Tecumseh, we had a problem with a lunch service worker building lunches and they had to close down their program for a week. Do we have a plan around that? Are we taking temperatures or doing anything to keep our program going? Because I see a huge need out there for our lunch and breakfast program.
So I'll turn it over to Mr. Robbins, although the lunch workers have followed the guidelines in terms of social distancing and practicing those safe practices, hand washing, using gloves, and we have provided masks as well in that regard. We've also given some guidance. If they have traveled, they cannot go and serve for us. They also cannot come if they've been exposed to illness or anything related to any kind of illness, actually. So those are some of the initial overall guidance pieces. Mr. Robbins, do you want to add to that and then talk about the plan? If there is an issue, how we might proceed? Should there be an issue?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And I think you've covered that very well. The case that I think Ms. Bowley is referring to, I don't think it was Tecumseh, I think it was Tonganoxie, which is outside of Kansas City. And then I know there was a situation in Raytown, Missouri. What we would do is what you would have to do under any case, and that is you have to assess just who the person came into contact with who was in the vicinity. In both cases, they chose to shut down their program altogether. If that was something that we needed to do and required, was required to do because of the exposure, then, you know, that would be a step that we would have to take. Hopefully that it doesn't come to that quite naturally.
I think Ms. Bowley had a good recommendation though, in that taking temperatures, I think is probably, if that's possible. I know essential employees at my work, we get our temperature upon arrival every morning. And if it's greater or equal to 100.4, they're not allowed to come to work. They have to go home. And I think that might be a screening tool that we might want to investigate at least.
Okay, that is something we'll take a look at then, Dr. Mickelson.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I, I have a question. And I just, you know, you've, you've cleared the hurdles, high hurdles that have been placed before you, you and your whole team. I just wonder what challenges are still pending? What do you, what are the things that keep you up at night a little bit? Worrying how you're going to resolve or fix or, you know, what, what's the next hurdle you've got to clear, I guess?
Well, you know, and I'll, and I'll invite, I believe Mr. Dick has joined the call. Mr. Dick, are you on the call? And I'll invite his voice into the space on a secondary. You know, I am always most concerned about making sure all of our students who are preparing to graduate do graduate. They still go in to get into college. You know, all the ACTs were canceled through June across the country. And so we want to make sure that we're tracking our seniors and our juniors and just making sure that our young people who are preparing to go into their next season in life are prepared to do that. And so, and that may require a bit of personalized attention at another kind of way. So we're still figuring that piece out. I think the hurdle continues to be making sure that we adequately protect all individuals while also still meeting all the unmet needs. And so one comment that came up from Pine Ridge Community was the level of food need for the families because of the job one comment that came up from Pine Ridge Community was the level of food need for the families because of the job loss as well as the stipulation that you do have to be 18 or under to get lunch. So we do have a lot of hungry families out there that continue to need that level of support. Another need right now while we're meeting, our special ed team is still stuffing envelopes for our special ed families and and just creatively providing occupational therapy and physical therapy and all of those very personalized services in ways that are adequate enough so that we don't have significant gap. I would say that broadband services continues to be, I believe, a very large need for the Topeka community, and that's a community issue that we encourage people to advocate for because Wi-Fi access is something that I think this uncovers the great need for that. Mr. Dick, I'll ask a third time if he's on the call and he can offer any thoughts about, one, how we're tracking students and following up if they don't show up because he's giving direction on that. And if there's anything else on a secondary level of highlight or need that he'd like to share, Mr. Dick, if you're on the call, please do that.
Sure, I'm here. So for tracking students, everybody, and I'm just getting numbers in this evening and they're not too bad so far from all of the schools about the percentage of students that have been engaged one way or another this week. So far, just to give you a rough idea of where we're at, most of the schools are somewhere between 80 and up to about 94% of their students have been engaged in some way, either by email, Google Classroom, or Zoom for the week. So that's been a positive thing. I think you can see kind of as you go from the west side of town to the east side of town, those numbers fall off a little bit and kind of like Dr. Anderson, we're just talking about internet access. I think that plays a big part in that for us right now. And so, and just talking to those principals, those further over to the lower socioeconomic sides of town and areas are where we're struggling to have the higher engagement of students online. So everybody's tracking kids as far as what their engagement is, and then they have a list of students that they're reporting to their administrators who we've had no contact with. I think that's probably the way that we will find the majority of the students who we have internet issues with. And so administrators are taking then those lists of students and following up with phone calls and everything home, trying to track down and figure out what it is that we need to do to get them engaged in school.
And then in terms of the graduation dates, I shared those, that was the end of July and then we had a rain date. Would you like to share those dates, Mr. Dick?
Sure. So for the graduation plan, what I think we, the Expo Center was trying to talk with us a little bit about possible dates in the future, but they really didn't have very many options open for us. So our alternate plan, which is what we're going to do now is Saturday, July 25th, we will do them at Hummer at the football stadium and have them outside. The backup date for that will be August 1st, the following Saturday, outside at Hummer. And then we are planning some way to do a virtual graduation for the May date that it would have been on anyway. So we'll, we'll continue with plans for the virtual graduation. But then we'll have the actual physical graduations if we're able to at that time on July 25th out at Hummer Sports Park, the football stadium.
And here's the wonderful part, and that suggestion apart came from our students about being outside because if in fact, we are under some level of restriction, part of the conversation with the health department, it's outside. It seats, what, about 6,000? Is that right, Mr. Dick?
Yeah, the capacity at the football stadium is 4,000 on the home side and 2,000 on the visiting side, 6,000 total.
And so we will work with the health department. And if there was still some restriction, if with that large space, is there a way to spread individuals out and have some level of attendance? If the restriction is lessened, but even if there was a restriction, but if it was less than what it is now, could a space that large somehow allow for some social distancing and opportunity in some type of fashion? So excited about just a creative thought in that regard, and we'll be keeping people posted about what's possible. But either way, we will still have a virtual experience planned by the school principals and PTO. And we're looking forward to the many opportunities to creatively plan ahead through the challenges or what's disguised as challenges in front of us. Any other instructional questions? That is all we have. I do want to mention that there is a item on the agenda for a waiver of 24 credits and our school board attorney has shared that really our policy already allows for students to, you know, graduate with 21 or 24 credits. However, just to be on the safe side, we're turning in, you know, the waiver application to KSDE and we want to make sure it's duly noted that, you know, we have the opportunity to allow students to graduate with 21 credits and that we waive the 24 credit rule as part of that. Ms. Cope, do you want to add any comments or speak to the language there? And she may be muted right now, so they'll have to unmute her if that is the case. And if not, I know she is on the call, but it may take them a moment to unmute her in that regard. But are there any questions about that? Because that's one piece that was an addition. And I believe Mr. Kip is on the line and can speak to that as well. Mr. Kip? All right, well, I guess.
Okay, yeah, as Dr. Anderson mentioned, part of the waiver is whether or not boards are recognizing that decision to allow that flexibility of 21 credits. Now, we, we have had that as a board regulation for, for a few years now, primarily for at-risk kids. But now we're into the realm of maybe more of our kids are at risk given the, given the current situation. And we want, we want you to grant us that flexibility for school administrators at the high school level to grant that 21 credit diploma in cases where it makes the most sense in this current situation we're in.
The state law is that 21 credits are required. Is that correct?
Yes. And the only difference between a 21 credit diploma and a 24 are the number of electives. The core is exactly the same.
So let's say we don't have an at-risk student last year, but he has 22 credit hours. I assume we allow that student to graduate?
And before you answer, Mr. Kip, Mr. Dick, since you are a high school principal, how do you handle that? If you had a student that was a 22 credit, what would normally happen? And then Mr. Kip can talk about under this waiver, what we're asking. Go ahead, Mr. Dick.
Sure. So in the, in previous years, students would have had to have met a couple of criteria per our regulation for us to be able to put them on a 21 credit diploma. The parent has to sign the form to do that. The student has to sign the form. Counselor, assistant principal, and then it comes to the building principal for approval. Those criteria pretty well mirror pretty closely what the state requirements are for the 21 credit diploma. There's not a lot of difference between the two of those. So typically, they've had to have some kind of at-risk experience in their life. The state does this if they go into the state custody at some point in time, then they, across the state, do this. So our policy more or less mirrors what they have and allows us to do that in situations where a student has had some adverse experiences, but hasn't necessarily been put into state custody at some point in time. So if a kid were on 22 credits and met that criteria, then yes, we might sign that and let them graduate with 21 credits. They still meet all of our core credits. It's really elective credits that they don't have at that time, the same number of elective credits as other students. If it were a kid with 22 credits and they didn't meet that criteria, then they'd have to come on and go ahead and, and earn their 24.
The vast majority of our students earn 24 credits, and I would assume, is that correct?
Yes, the vast majority earn 24 credits.
And so, Mr. Kip, under this waiver, then what would then happen if a student was, again, the same question, a 22 credit student who was not at risk, could they then graduate, given the state that we're in, based on this waiver of the 24 credit?
Yes, absolutely. They could graduate with that 21 at the discretion of the principal, removing those barriers of having the parent sign it and having kind of those red tape pieces of counselor paperwork, things like that. If, I, I think the principals would still use this with some discretion, given the impact maybe on college admissions and things like that. I don't, Mr. Dick, if you could speak to the collegiate impact of a 21 credit?
And as you do that, Mr. Dick, I would also want to say that most of our students who are on track for 24 credit at this time of the year are still on track for 24 credit, and we anticipate those young people, as you heard Mr. Dick mention, 80 to 90% of engagement this week will still proceed forward. But this flexibility allows for young people to adjust if needed. Mr. Dick, would that be accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. Every time we have a student, and we would do this in this case too, there's the potential that there's some university or some program that a student may want to go to out there that having 21 credits versus 24 may limit their ability to do that. And so part of that conversation with the counselor always is what those limitations may be depending on what it is that you want to do. I don't know that I can think of a time right offhand that it has prevented anybody from doing something they wanted to do. But we're always cautious about advising students that that, and their parent, that that may be a concern. And I don't know that we would, I don't foresee that we would do that any differently here. I think that's our job to advise them and let them know of the potential issues if, if you choose to do this. For the most part, they, well, not really for the most part, they do get all of the core credits that they need. So it's really electives that they're missing when they do this.
Those are all of our instructional items that we have on an instructional. And I do, I did fail to mention that April, as we conclude our part and leave it for you to ask any other questions you may have, April is also Occupational Therapist Month. And I would save the best for last, and that we'll have their proclamation at the board meeting at the next meeting. Any other questions for us? Because that is all that we have to present.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Are there any other questions for Dr. Anderson or staff? I don't hear any. Is anyone? Okay, I think we've had a discussion on the waiver of 24 credits for graduation. It seems reasonable to me. And there is on the agenda, an action item to waive the 24 credits for graduation and allow 21 credits this year. In those situations where it seems reasonable to do and the principal's discretion, will entertain a motion to adopt that action item?
This is Laura Munoz. I move to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Mr. Munoz offers a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, this is Melanie, and I moved to second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion or questions regarding this action? I don't hear any. So Ms. Lister, we're ready to vote?
Vote is open. Reverend Williams, did you want a voice vote?
So Bowley will vote, vote yes. Thank you, Mrs. Bowley.
Reverend Williams?
And Mr. Gowan, can we make sure that Reverend Williams is not muted? I'm sure he probably is not, but just so if we can double check to make sure.
I don't see his number on here.
Okay. Maybe he's dropped off.
I'll mark him not present at vote. And the motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Next, excuse me, next on the agenda is board member comments. I'll start with who I can see here. Mr. Munoz, do you have any comments tonight?
Yeah, I just, I've been very impressed, first off, with the administration. And they're being able to turn on a dime with all that's going on in our, in our world and come up with a plan working together with the state level to, to, you know, work with their students. I've been impressed with teachers who have had to change completely the way that they've taught and, and been impressed with our paras and and all of individuals who have been working to help make sure our students are fed. So I'm just, I'm more than grateful. My heart is just feels amazed that individuals who have put in 110% at a time when we all are dealing with their own personal worries and families and whatnot. What's most in my mind for me is just making sure and ensuring that we're not doing what we can to be proactive in terms of the health of students, of our staff. And then also beyond that, making sure that we're, we're not missing any, any students. We know it's, it's not a perfect system, but that it'll evolve to, to be increasingly better. And so, and I'm speaking of, you know, those students who are missing access to internet, which it looks, it sounds from what I'm hearing that we're working on that. You know, our student, special ed students, ELL students, and those who are in tough economic situations. So I think we have an amazing group of individuals who are on top of many of these issues, and I'm just appreciative of everyone's effort.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Mr. Bowley?
I just wanted to say, it has only been two and a half weeks, even though it feels like it's been two and a half months. And how our whole TPS family has come together to make all of this happen for our students is just so amazing. And being out there feeding lunches, handing out lunches to children, and the amazing amount of food that's coming out there for all the families, I just cannot say enough for all the food staff that is making that happen. The administrators that are making that happen, our bus drivers now and our paras. How do we ever even really thank all of the people, all of our TPS family for everything they're doing for our students? I'm just so proud to be a board member and being a part of that. And I want to also thank, you know, our social workers that are getting out and finding our students that we have concerns about and our counselors. And also I want to say a big thank you to our parents. We could not do this without their support. I know that there, many of them are stressed out at home trying to make these schedules work, you know, realizing how hard it is for teachers to make all of this happen. But without them, we could not make this happen. So I want to thank all of those people out there supporting their students. You guys are so much a part of our family as well. So thank everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowley. Mr. Stuart Campbell?
Yes. Yeah, I echo what Mr. Munoz and what Ms. Bowley said. I feel very proud to be a school board member and to be a part of our Topeka Public Schools family. It's, it's just nothing short of amazing what's happened in these past two and a half weeks. There've been a lot of stretched minds and stretched comfort levels this first week of the Continuous Learning Plan. I know teachers, students, parents have experimented and explored new virtual territory with Zoom class meetings and just understanding better how with Zoom class meetings and just understanding better how Google Classroom works and how Seesaw works. And there's just been a lot of trial and error as everyone adjusts and adapts. And I know everyone's being challenged beyond what they ever imagined. And I, I know they are figuring out that they can do it with the conversations I've had with, with staff and, and parents. And I just, in closing, I want to say that children in Topeka Public Schools, they are, they are learning. They're learning with their teachers, and they are reconnecting with their classmates. They're seeing them Monday through Friday online. I have seen this myself with my own children, with my, my husband, you know, he's a TPS teacher, seeing him teach online and seeing the phone calls he's making to parents and, and students, too. Students are talking on the phone with their, with their teachers. And I'm just very, very grateful for the competent and compassionate leadership of Topeka Public Schools and our just incredible dedicated staff.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Dr. Bonebraker, are you on?
I don't see Dr. Bonebraker anymore.
Okay, Reverend Williams, are you back online?
I believe Reverend Williams is on the line, so Mr. Gallin, if you can make sure that you don't see him.
I think I got him right here.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead, Reverend Williams.
Well, I would just like to echo the comments of my previous, the previous comments of my colleagues. I don't think there are adequate words out there that can express my appreciation and gratitude for all that Dr. Anderson and everyone connected with 501 have done in these last two weeks. I'm still trying to adjust to this craziness of social distancing. I am a people person. The other day, I got in the car and went to the Topeka Zoo to go back, go by Down Gage, look at the animals so I can relate, because that's how I feel. But this is what is necessary. I got a text from my daughter in Georgia, that Georgia just implemented canceling school for the rest of the school year down there, so we're a few weeks ahead of them. This is very serious times in which we live, but I think we got the handle of it, and I'm confident going forward that everybody will be safe and our kids will get the quality education if 501 is always delivered. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. I don't want to be redundant to what everybody else has said, but I just express my heartfelt thanks to the teachers and prayer professionals, the food service workers, the bus drivers, the administrators who've turned on a dime and changed their routines and their method of instruction. In these times of stress for everybody, I think it's important to have some flexibility and resilience. And so I'm grateful that we're able to offer some of that with our 21 credits for graduation. I think that's a step in the right direction for some of these students that might struggle over the next couple of months. I'm pleased to know that we've got an opportunity to offer a graduation ceremony for our seniors and to recognize them in an appropriate way at the end of the summer. I think it's great that they help participate in the planning of that, and so I'm appreciative of the leadership's willingness to involve them and identifying solutions to recognize them. Just keep it up, I think this, we have to keep ourselves and pace ourselves mentally and physically because this could be in for a little while. It may be a precursor to how we teach. I'm not sure at the elementary and high school and middle school levels, but maybe at the college level, I know a lot of that goes online. So a lot of the students will, will learn how to do it before they go on to college. So again, thank you to everyone who's made some adjustments to their schedule and been able to provide education to our students. That concludes our agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Reverend Williams, thank you, there's a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that, this is LaLamunios.
Thank you, Mr. Munios, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? We're ready to vote?
Verbally, please?
Aye.
Do that for everyone that's present, thank you, motion pass.
One, one final just administrative action, I want to make sure we had a quorum for the entire meeting. We assume we did.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Everybody stay healthy, please.